All right. Good evening. It is Monday, July 14th, 2025. This is a meeting of the Midfield Zoning Board of Appeals, acting as the Corporate Health's Permit Granting Authority under a, or under a Chapter 40B of the Mass General Laws. This is the continued hearing on the 40B application relative to 86 Plain Street, Winder Estates. I think I have it right this time, finally. I'm Jack Nicholas, the Chair, and the other sitting members of the panel are Jared Gustafson and Christine Barton, the fourth member of the panel, sitting in a non-voting capacity, but otherwise a full participant, is William McNiff. And we do that, as I've mentioned at other meetings, in the event that one of the three sitting members were, for some reason, not to be able to complete the process or comply with the Mullen Rule in terms of filling in for any missed meetings. We have a fourth member who's been involved the entire way so that we end up with a substitute and we'd have a full voting panel when we come to the end of the process. Also with us tonight is Paul Haberty, who's our legal counsel, 40B consultant to the board, acting in that capacity and has been at all of the meetings to advise us as to process and law and regulations surrounding Chapter 40B. We also have Maria De La Fuente, who's the Director of Land Use and Planning for the town of Midfield. Maria is also been the liaison for this whole process, receiving all of the public input and all of the documents submitted by any of the parties and by Tetra Tech, who is our consultant, and also takes copious notes that are turned into the minutes of all of these meetings and coordinates all of the technology. When tonight, we are meeting totally by Zoom, so hopefully the technology issues of the last meeting are totally resolved. They will not if Maria's doing, but I think the hybrid process is cumbersome at best. So many thanks publicly to Maria for everything she's been doing throughout this entire process. This might also be a good time just to mention, in the course of the hearing and on the record, I know that there's been, through the whole course of the process, but particularly in the last couple of weeks, there have been many emails, letters and other correspondence submitted by members of the public, primarily folks in the Plain Street neighborhood who are directly impacted by this proposed development. And I understand that there's been some frustration perhaps at not getting response or immediate responses, so just for the record, would like to let you know that anything that is submitted to the board in the form of written correspondence, be it email or email with letters attached or sent by snail mail or whatever it may be, anything and everything that comes to the board finds its way through Maria to the board members individually. It also becomes part of the record of this hearing. So everything has been retained. However, it is not feasible or likely that you are going to get a direct, immediate or any response to each individual correspondence to the extent that that is possible or feasible or frankly necessary, then there will be a response. But if you don't get a response, please understand that you're not being ignored. Your communication has been submitted and, you know, to the extent that you choose to address anything in that communication at the public hearing, you know, I think in each session and that will continue tonight and going forward, there's been ample opportunity for public participation. So Maria's getting a bit overburdened, frankly, with this whole process. And I just think in fairness to her and also to the board, just understand that, you know, there are not going to be off-the-record responses necessarily. So an upset on that procedurally. We also have from Tetra Tech Courtney Sudek and Steve Bulley, who are our peer advisors, our peer reviewers rather, who provide recommendations and comments to the board relative to all of the technical aspects of what is being presented by the applicant as we go through the process. So I think I have hit upon everyone who is here from our side. We will momentarily be promoting, or you can go ahead and do it now, Maria, the applicant team. And the way we're going to conduct the hearing tonight, because we're getting into a new area, we're going to be totally focused this evening on the site and civil and wetlands on review. And those aspects of the project, which we really have not gotten very deeply into and we are starting to inch our way at a little greater speed down the timeline for the 40B hearing process. So we want to get somewhat deeply into those tonight. The best way to do that, as we have done with all of the 40B hearings and frankly, all of the regular zoning board hearings on all the other matters we hear, is to hear first from the applicant with just an overview tonight of the important points of the, you know, the impact on wetlands and environment. We're going to start with, we already had an overview in the original presentation at the first meeting, and so what I'd like to do is to get pretty quickly into the Tetra Tech letters of May 8th and May 20th, to which I don't believe there's been any response on the various issues that they've raised. So after the opening presentation from the applicant on these issues, there'll be a dialogue back and forth with Tetra Tech relative to these issues. What I would like to do in that process is to identify the most significant environmental and other issues, the impact of this project, because I think we're going to be heading very soon to hopefully a more comprehensive waiver list, which we'll discuss a little later on in the meeting. So that will be the primary focus. The board is welcome to ask questions at any point during that process. We also have the Chair and Vice Chair of, oops, excuse me, I just popped out of my screen, which I didn't mean to do. The Chair and Vice Chair, I believe, of the Conservation Commission, who have submitted materials previously in the process, but also the board is welcoming their input tonight relative to issues that are raised in the conversation back and forth between the applicant team and Tetra Tech. And then we will open the meeting to questions and comments or additional information to be provided by any interested attendees. Is primarily, I assume, the folks from the neighborhood. So everyone will have an opportunity to speak tonight. We're not down to the point of refined enough issues that we're down to, in the moment, back and forth dialogue. Tonight, we want to identify the major issues that we have to consider relative to the environmental and wetlands and civil and site issues and hear what the other concerns will be, and then we will move forward from there.
One question, sorry to interrupt. Do we need Tetra Tech to, they issued a comment letter regarding the final traffic issues. Do we need to go over that at all or?
Yeah, that's what I was talking about, the comment letters that they, I'm sorry, did you say relative? I couldn't quite hear you.
They just issued their July 10th traffic comp?
Yeah, we're going to get to traffic, go back to traffic at the next meeting.
Okay.
Will be the plan. I want to focus tonight because we have to move on to these other issues. And then there, I'll talk about that toward the end. Okay, but the plan will be to discuss the traffic issues in that response. If we can have time to get to that tonight, we will. Okay, but we want to start with the environmental.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Just so Courtney knows, should she hang around in case we get to the traffic piece? She's just the, she just does the traffic engineering.
Oh, I don't know. What does anyone want to do?
Whatever the board wants.
Whatever the board wants. Well, we do have the written response on the traffic, but I don't know that anyone is ready to have further discussion on the traffic. Plus, we, the major issues with the traffic now are the remediation steps, which is going to involve some conversation with with the tree warden and Public Works and the Chair of the Planning Board and a separate hearing within a hearing relative to removal of trees and other items in scenic way and also under the scenic way act and also under the shade tree, state shade tree law. So I appreciate the fact that Courtney is here, but I really want to get into the other issues first and then come back to traffic. So we're ready to go? All right, so I see Steve and Deb and Ian.
Well, good evening, Jack, and members of the board and everyone else's attendance tonight. Thanks for that, kind of giving us an idea of how to proceed this evening, Jack. I appreciate that. If, rather than go through an overview again and have folks listen to me and my diatribe, I think the best thing to do is just to turn it over to Deb. We thought that we would do a quick civil presentation and then work on that first, but it sounds like you'd rather do an environmental presentation first. That's fine. Deb can run you through sort of the layout of the site and how it impacts the various, or how it is laid out relative to the various wetlands rules and regulations for the state and for the town. Would that be what you want, Jack, first?
Yeah, I think that would be, yeah, that'd be good.
So Deb, why don't you focus your little presentation of the site layout on as if we were doing the NOI, you know?
Sure.
Was that? And if we could share a screen, Maria, or pull up the, you know, the main site plan, Deb will, either Deb can run through her stuff or you can, you know, guide the screen.
Yes, she should be able to now.
Okay, great.
Well, Maria, just before we start that, it might be worth promoting Deb Barrow and John Woodhough.
Yes.
Since they will be the next part of this discussion, but rather than stopping and going back.
Let me promote them now, and if Deb and John can identify themselves for the record, that would be great. They're rejoining as a panelist now. All right. Deb and John, can you hear us?
Hi, so thank you for inviting us. Let me just say the outset, so I'm Deb Barrow, Chair of Midfield Concom, and John can introduce himself next, but I'm not so sure that we should be sitting here with you as panelists. We were invited to attend and we're happy to do so, but because we will have the application in front of us, I don't want anyone to be confused that we're participating in a way in terms of, you know, that would be a conflict with what we need to do with this.
All right, yeah, then, yeah, you're probably right on that. I just figured to facilitate things, but, you know, let's have the presentation first and then we'll promote you to, for any comments.
Thank you. Yeah, thanks.
All right, Maria, throw them out.
Sorry.
Bye, Deb.
All right, Steve, you have the floor.
I'm turning it over to Deb.
All right.
Resident experts, you'll begin with where we started and.
Throw out one, Deb, and we bring in another, okay?
Yeah, exactly. Do the A and R and how we, I'm sorry, how we did the INRAD and identified the wetland locations and et cetera, et cetera. She's the expert.
Okay, good evening. Deb Keller with Merrill Engineers and Land Surveyors. Thank you, Steve. Thank you, members of the board. So the first plan that hopefully everybody can see that's up on the screen now is the existing conditions plan, and we'll start there with, as Steve stated, we did go before the Conservation Commission and review the wetland resources on the property. So I'm going to start with bordering vegetated wetlands. This is a blue dashed line. They were all delineated, this outer line here.
Deb, which plan is that? We have a set in front of us too. Which one is it?
C 2.1. It's the existing conditions plan.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. So you can see, I'll zoom in just a little bit. You can see flag numbers. So the wetland resources were flagged by a wetland scientist and reviewed with the conservation agent at the time. So as noted, there are wetland, a large wetland that flows off the property to the north, and it kind of runs around and meets up again here along the easterly property line. So what we also reviewed with the commission is, and identified is a vernal pool in this large portion or wetland series here. That's what I'm outlining here with my little hand. So that was reviewed with the commission as well. We reviewed the bordering land subject to flooding. When you go on to the FEMA maps, they just give you what they call the Zone A, which doesn't have an elevation identified to it. And sometimes it can cross right through a site, you know, that has varying elevations on it. So that's what happened here. And so with the review with the commission, we went and completed a flood study for particularly, the property in particular, and looked at this area and determined the flood areas, what you see here in orange. And it is at 100-year storm elevation, so it's a flood elevation of 177.4, which goes around this, there's a little finger in here. This is the pond that we see on the property, wraps around here, even though there is a connection with bordering vegetation, BBW, that bisects this upper upland area with the main upland area on the site as well as flows off to the north. Most of the flow flows to the north. There is some flow that flows this way, and therefore you have the bordering vegetated wetland. But one of the comments that I wanted to clarify is a question as to why the 177.4 tapers down as you come off the property. That is because this is sort of a particular flood plain for this one location. And as the water runs to the north, it does open up into a larger wetland and drains to the, in an easterly direction, dropping in grade. So that flood plain is sort of its own isolate, it's not isolated, but it's its own little area here where water sits, gets to that 177.4 and then continues to spill over. So then you lose that flood plain elevation as you come off the property. So that was again reviewed and approved through the conservation process, INRAD process with the commission. Therefore, these are the resources that we've utilized in the design and focused on trying to protect them to the extent practical. As noted on the existing, we do have an existing driveway coming up along the, this front wetland area into where the existing dwelling sits in this southwesterly corner with the, as we went on the sidewalk, you know, open fields in this area with shed fencing, et cetera. So those are the wetland resources. I'll move along to, this is our erosion control plan. And then, again, this is the, this is the original set. So it shows the double driveway. Like to do if it's okay, we do have a draft set that wasn't submitted, which kind of we've been carrying through the changes that we've been making throughout with traffic comments. And we're hoping to file this set this week. So this is, this is more similar to what we've been talking about with a single driveway coming in, trying to stay away from the wetland as much as possible, matching the main driveway with the existing driveway up until we get into the site where now you have your main proposed development. We are proposing a crossing at this location here so that we can reach the upland area here where we're not intending to build, but it is the reserve area for the septic system. So this crossing would be permitted through conservation such that if down the future, this development, this septic system failed and they needed to use the reserve area, they could access it. Obviously, our intent is not to have that happen, but as required through Board of Health and Title V, we are required to show a reserve area. We are working, other than the main entrance coming in, we, our goal was to try to stay outside the 25-foot setback to the wetlands to the best of our ability. What we're showing, I'm going to zoom in just a little bit closer so you can see that these two green lines here, one is the 50-foot buffer and one is the 100. So anywhere where we encroach over the 50, we're showing what those setbacks are. So we're working very hard to keep that outside the 25 was our design goal. Trying to see, so then, so the only time where we would encroach in that 25-foot buffer would be along the existing driveway, which from the previous or original plan set, we have shifted it five feet farther to the south to allow for the construction of a new rain garden here to help with pretreatment and treatment of the driveway, main entrance driveway here, just as we come in. We do have a constructed wet basin up at front originally. We have a rain garden here that's new. And as we move into the, into the main portion of the site, we had, have a subsurface chamber system in this location here, a larger subsurface chamber system up north. We have another one easterly here, and we've added two more, one internally inside the island and one at the end of this drive, shared driveway here, and those were to address and capture some of the roof runoff and just lessen the amount of stormwater runoff going to the three main subsurface chamber systems. With respect to wetland, we are looking to comply with the stormwater management standards. So that was our focus too with the design for the drainage. And again, the main wastewater treatment system is in the center island here, which stays 50 feet, I believe, in this location, right where I have my pan handle is where the tanks are located, so that's all within that island area. Just clipping the 100-foot buffer, so it's as far away as possible with respect to the septic design, which would be fully compliant with Title V. I think that covers everything from a wetland resource area. With respect to a general overview, we are aware, we have a letter and we're looking to respond to both the civil letter and the wetlands letter together. A lot of the comments sort of went hand in hand, and they focused mostly on tweaking some of the stormwater to make sure that we were meeting all of the standards that were required. Again, the site is, has BBW, the vernal pool, bordering land subject to flooding. With the vernal pool, we are considered an outstanding resource water as well as with the septic, we're in a aquifer, or no, excuse me, not an aquifer, a water supply protection zone. So we're looking to make sure that we are providing adequate treatment before any discharge to the wetland resources on the property. Do we want to stop there and go through wetland comments? Yes, no?
When you say wetland comments, you're talking about responding to the Tetra Tech letter, but you haven't done that yet, so?
So we're in the process and we're looking to respond to both of those letters concurrently. And again, that what I was mentioning, that this draft set that I have here, we've been following with all of the traffic comments, and we've incorporated both civil and wetland comments in this plan set. We're just not 100% there yet, so I'm looking to submit that this week. And we would have a response to both the civil and the wetland review comment letters.
When do you anticipate hearing those?
This week.
This week?
Yep. So I can go in further detail into the drainage if we'd like, or any of the utilities, unless we, there's.
I guess what I'm trying to do tonight is to identify what are going to be major issues or major sticking points with respect to all of the environmental issues. major issues or major sticking points with respect to all of the environmental issues. Maybe I'm not using the right word, it's not my field.
Mr. Chair, I have a couple of questions, can I ask a few questions? Um, thanks Deb for the overview. I know that the FEMA maps were recently updated, or you know, within the last like six to eight months. Do, do, does that proposed plan reflect the updated, and maybe there were no changes, but does it reflect, updated FEMA maps?
Um, I will double check that, I wasn't aware that they were updated in the last six months. We did this um, the Anrad process was last fall. So that may be outside of, just outside that six months. I can double check, at, at the time that we filed with conservation, the A- the Anrad process, uh, the FEMA had this as a Zone A, so there was no elevation. So we did a detailed floodplain study with the commission to try to get an elevation, um, define that floodplain elevation, which is what you see in orange on the plan here. So it's, it's, it's more detailed than what you would get on FEMA, but I will circle back with FEMA and double check to make sure, um, whether or not uh they made any additional changes.
Perfect, thank you. And then, I don't have the local bylaws in front of me, but can you just refresh my memory? There is a twenty five foot no structure and a fi- and twenty five foot no, build, and then a fifty foot no structure, is that what our local bylaw state?
I do believe I recall, yes, that sounds correct to me. Um, so we would be identifying those as waiver requests that we would be having, as we've uh utilized the twenty five foot setback as, you know, um, what I, we would have as a no disturb, I believe it's a fifty no disturb.
No disturb, okay, yeah, so that when you submit these updated plans, I just wanna understand like where any kind of, you know, building structure, or I think maybe the driveway might be part of it. So I just wanna get a better understanding of what structures or paved areas are within those, buffer zones.
Zones, so, so when you look at this plan, this, this line here that I'm following now is the fifty foot, buffer.
Yep.
So, so as I mentioned, this main, the main driveway coming through, um, is within that fifty foot no disturb, uh again, starting from here, all the way down to here is we're matching the existing driveway. So we even pulled it a little bit farther to the south to try to keep it away from as much as possible, and allow for some um, stormwater BMPs, or treatment. Again, as we follow through this um, this is, building one is just clipping the hundred foot buffer here. So the, the one through five, six, I'll see if I can get this, it's not panning. There we go, so all of these are outside the hundred foot buffer, so here's, and then you go to thirteen. It's um within the hundred foot buffer, but outside the fifty. So here, we're, this is a retaining wall, we're trying, this is a, this is a pinch point here, where we're approximately twenty five feet. The back of the wall is twenty six, twenty, it looks like twenty nine. Um, so we're trying to, to abide by a twenty five foot setback. So your first structure that sort of encroaches in that fifty foot setback, where we'd be asking for uh a waiver from the fifty foot,
Yeah.
would be this corner. And then the only other ones that are with uh, that encroach, this one's just out, the deck is just outside the fifty, uh fifty foot. But building nineteen, the garage is within the fifty foot. But again, we're trying to respect a twenty five foot setback um to the wetland. So those, those are the, actually, the two, two buildings that are within the fifty, uh, yeah, within the fifty. And then it would be the main entrance again. Would be the, the um encroachments into the local, um, fifty foot no disturb.
And where does the twenty five come from, is that the state?
It's a local, our local Medfield Wetland bylaw.
I thought that was the fifty.
A little more stringent than what the, the state has.
So, that's the fifty, you are correct. Um, the twenty five was the, our project team, trying to respect the wetland um resource areas, and felt as though a twenty five foot, if we could abide by twenty five, at least we're providing a buffer to the wetland. Whereas the state, there is no buffer to the wetland. Required.
And Mr. Chair, the uh Conservation Commission Chair has her hand raised. If you'd like me to promote her or wait.
I, yeah, no, I think you should promote her. I think that's why I thought at the beginning it would be a good idea.
And I apologize if I misspoke.
Kermit the Frog was right, it's not easy being chair.
I'm sorry to interrupt um the presentation, but it's Debbie Barrow and um Medfield, Hong Kong. And so I just wanted some, um, to hope to assist in the clarification. Our bylaw has a fifty foot no disturb zone. We don't reference anything about twenty five feet in our bylaw.
That's correct.
And when we talk about a no disturb zone, we talk about do not alter anything. It's not a no build versus a no disturb, it's a no disturb zone. It's a rebuttable presumption. The presumption is that any alteration within that fifty foot um zone from the wet, from the, the wet edge of the wetland in that first fifty feet is, uh, will, create an adverse impact on the resource that, to which it is buffer zone, right, that fifty foot no disturb. And it is under the town bylaw, it is uh incumbent upon the applicant to demonstrate, overcome that presumption and show that, however, that the project will not cause an adverse impact to the resource. So it's, so it's a rebuttable presumption, it's fifty feet, it's a no disturb zone.
Thank you, it's very helpful, don't go away.
So a- as stated, that would be something that we would be asking uh for a waiver from that local, um, bylaw. And we were looking for relief down to the twenty five as being what this project, would propose.
Okay, and those, and nothing on the existing plan as you went through it would encroach within the twenty five feet. But you cited a couple of the buildings plus part of the driveway that would encroach in the fifty foot?
Well, so, uh, no, I take, the dr- main driveway will encroach most likely in the twenty five, especially in this location here, where the existing driveway is already that close, to this wetland in this area. So you can actually see the tree line coming in, that's, that's where the existing, I can, I can hop back to it. Well, actually, this one shows, the, this is the existing driveway, you can see how close it is to um the wetland already. So we, we were holding our proposed driveway, you can see how we kind of pulled it inward, so that we're inside, trying to stay as far away from the wetland without, you know, working within this pinch point, um, between the property line and the wetland uh resource area.
So then the proposed,
This, this area.
Proposed driveway would be within the twenty five foot?
That is correct, in this location, yes.
Okay.
But are you bringing it further away from, so you're making it better than what's there today, right, Deb?
S- slightly, yes, yes.
And it's relocated.
You're pulling it away from that, that, that wetland area.
Yes, slightly, by, only by a few feet, but yes, we did the best we could in that location without altering um, oops, too much of the vegetation along here, and looking to try to keep that walking path in through here as natural as possible as well.
So it sounds like the waiver is gonna be for the fifty foot zone, so how many um houses would be, uh, would we, you guys need a waiver for?
So fifteen A and nineteen are the only two that encroach in the fifty foot.
What about the retaining wall, is, I mean, that would be considered a structure under the bylaw? So would that also require waivers because that would be within the fifty foot as well?
Well, we'd be asking for a waiver from that fifty foot buffer zone no disturb, down to the twenty five foot no disturb. So even though, I, I think that's more of a blanket unless we want to specifically isolate locations, because we may have grading that comes into this area in the back of these, that would encroach in that fifty foot buffer as well. So w- w- again, here, I'm not showing, I can, let's see if I can hop to the grading plan, and maybe that will, show, so here, you know, we do have some, we're trying our best not to encroach in the back of that, but you do come in, clip there, even though it's, it's easy to identify the structures that it kind of encroach, but there are some areas, let's see. Um, yep, down near this wall again, so this, this, as the wall showed, we were in the fifty there. So it's, it's minimal, but there is some grading associated with those structures that would be um, within that fifty foot buffer. We have grading behind this, eve- the infiltration structure itself is not within the fifty, but there is some grading to grade down and match grade here. Um, the sa- same goes for along the road here. You have, you have this grading that would be within that fifty foot no disturb. So it's not, um, it's not like a building, z- zoning setback requirement where you're looking at just the structure itself. Um, we'd be looking for relief from the fifty to the twenty five for, for the project. To allow them.
Erosion sediment, sedimentation control plan that you'll submit?
Yes, so that's the red dash line that you see here is our, um, it, we use it as a limit of work line, and we also use it as our erosion control line, and we do have, hop back, um, this is sort of our start, our framework for an erosion control and demolition plan, where we have um a lot of erosion control notes. Um, we've identified um some additional comments that came from, um, Tetra Tech wa- was to provide some soil stockpiling, temporary sedimentation basins, some staging, construction staging areas um on here. A lot of this information again would get further refined as we get through the permitting process, and a contractor gets involved, and we can get into the construction needs and methods with that contractor, and we would refine that, the, the um erosion control plan. Um, and I believe that was one of the questions that Tetra Tech asked for, is they would like us to have a construction management plan, which is something that gets prepared when um, in more detail when you have a contractor, um, as part of the project team when you're at that point. So that would be um, I, I typically see that as um, a con- condition of the approval that we would provide that before any start of construction. Um, but yes, so this um red line is our limit of work and erosion control line. So it's basically, everything outside of that outline is no touch. Um, the only correction I would make would be whether or not um, we may permit this crossing, and this might be a discussion with the commission when we get there, of allowing us to permit it, whether it gets built, with the original project or not. I think that will be something that needs to be worked out. So if it does get built, then that erosion control line would come up and ar- up and around that crossing, and we'd, we'd revise that plan to include that as part of the project.
And Deb, is that crossing the only wetlands that the project is planning to fill? Or is there any other wetland areas that you're looking to fill?
That would be the only impact to wetlands, um, direct impact to wetlands that we ha- would have. Um, and that.
How many square feet you're gonna fill?
So currently, right now, we were looking at um a cro- a twelve foot wide crossing, so very narrow crossing, just enough to get over there if they ever had to get over there to construct the um reserve, septic reserve area. We're looking at about five hundred and fifty square feet is this entire crossing. So we're trying to do it at the most narrowest spot of the wetland. Um, we do need to go out and uh pick up a little bit more topo through here, um, just to make sure that we have the topography correct for that crossing.
And then just to reiterate, that, that crossing leads toward to a, uh, a backup wastewater management system?
Yeah, so under Title Five, when you build a septic system, you have to show what they call a reserve area. So for this, our main uh primary system will be in the middle of the island down here. But our reserve area is shown up here in this island. So yes, it would be if for some reason down the line, you know, hopefully way, way, way down the line, um, if this system failed for any reason or couldn't be repaired within um this limit of work, they have, this is as a reserve area, that um we could construct the same system to support the development. But we're not intending to um construct it at this time. It's just a reserve location if needed. Hopefully that answered that question.
Because the existing, or the, the primary septic system is going to be sufficient to handle, twenty four units and whatever number of bedrooms.
That is, that is correct, so, right, right, so we designed that one to um accommodate the entire development. But the reserve is there in case of, um, you know, something fails, I guess. A lo- a lot of times, I, I honestly, I haven't seen a system be built in the reserve area yet, in my thirty years of engineering. Typically, uh, when a system fails, we repair it within the same location. Um, but it, it's under Title Five, we're required to do that, and, and, and show that there is another location on the property where that system could be, uh, rebuilt or built, if need be.
I'm just looking, there's, there's some pretty extensive comments in the uh, from Tetra Tech in the May eighth letter, um, relative to the septic system and some mess, DEP Title Five requirements, which is still gonna require a separate hearing with the uh, with the Board of Health.
That is, that is correct.
Which I guess is being deferred and, until, or unless there is an approval, with that condition, is that right? Not interested in going to the state.
No, well, we don't have, so, n- no, we would be filing with the Board of Health, um, for our Title Five system for approval. It would be a state permit through the local Board of Health,
Right.
process. Um, and, right now, it's, it's, the system is not a hundred percent designed and ready to go to Board of Health, but I, I think once we, it would be up to the project team, and I would defer to Steve as to when, they would like to file with Board of Health. they would like to file with Board of Health. Um, that could happen whenever. But typically, we like to get a little bit down the road with the, the zoning board to make sure um, the system that we're designing is, is adequate. And we don't have to keep going back and revising it if there's amendments that happen through the permitting process. But as of right now, this, we do have um, the system sized appropriately for the um, project. And it's just all the details. For example, some of the, I think some of the comments that were mentioned in Tetra Tech um, apply to the fact that we are in, as I mentioned, a uh, a well zone. And I think that was described in the Tetra Tech letter. So we're looking into, um, obviously, the system will need to um, address nitrogen loading. So the system will be um, fully compliant with the Title Five requirements under nitrogen loading. Those details haven't been in- incorporated into the plan set yet. So that's, those are the details that we are working on.
But that's gonna be included in your response to Tetra Tech. It's gonna be sometime this week.
Yes.
Cause that was, that was one of the things that jumped out at me. Again, I don't claim to have a deep understanding of all of this, so.
So the nitrogen loading is
The nitrogen loading talks about proposed system. Um, that basically would accommodate fifty-nine bedrooms and I think the count is somewhere around eighty-four.
Ye- yes, that's correct. If you, if you left your system without um, advanced nitrogen treatment. Um, if you did a typical house, you have a septic tank going directly into a leach field, Title Five system. Um, the requirement is you need a, um, for every four hundred and, I wanna make sure I'm saying this correctly, four hundred and forty gallons um, per acre. So when you calc that out, that ends up being the fifty-nine bedrooms. But you're allowed to go up to six hundred and sixty gallons per acre, which with that added nitrogen treatment, um, which would be applied to each one of the homes um, in the, the, in that uh, septic flow path. So as you come out of each building, the sewer would go through a uh, treatment tank or system before it got into the, the sewer closed system and into the septic field. And that treatment would allow you to go up to the six hundred and sixty gallons per acre, which gets us back up to eighty-nine bedrooms, which is what it, uh, it's being proposed for.
Christine, any other questions of Jared, Bill?
No, I don't have any right now.
Okay. I think it's I'd sort of hoped we could go through these two Tetra Tech letters and start to address things specifically, but I think we're we're getting a slightly more specific general overview, but we're gonna have the responses. And um, Steve, Lyle, I know you're there somewhere. Hiding behind the map that's on the screen.
Yes, Mr. Chairman.
You, we, would you be doing the responses to um, the applicant's responses? I'm just looking at a timeframe that we can have a, you know, focused discussion here.
Yeah, I mean, ultimately, it's gonna depend on when, when we get the revised set and, and, and letters. But um, yeah, within, within at least a couple of weeks, and once we get the letters, we can, we can have responses back.
Okay. Do you have any uh, general comments on what we've heard?
From the wetland side, Christine had brought up, you know, a lot of the, the overarching issues we had. Um, uh, you know, I, I think having more detail on that, on that proposed crossing, that, cause that's really the only wetland impact that's, that's on the project. Um, you know, ha- having that, that detail spelled out. And it certainly looks like it's been done here. So um, I imagine we'll, we'll address that once, once the plans are submitted. Um, but other than that, I don't, I don't think there's anything major here that, that um, would be cause for concern. You know, it, it is understood that the project's gonna have to go in front of the CONCOM too. So um, I think from the local standpoint, um, you know, and any required waivers, I think Deb spelled out what they, they would need.
And Steve, this is, there's no area of like natural habitat of like turtles or salamanders or anything like that?
Uh, sorry, I don't, I don't, um, you mean ou- outside of the wetland areas?
Yeah, or, and you know, if any of those areas are like na- the, like the natural heritage habitats of, like designated
Yeah, there was, there was no natural heritage. I don't believe. There is the vernal pool. Uh, but again, that, that, all those limits are spelled out on the plan. So anything outside of that's buffer zone and, and regulatory, you know, compliances. Um, there's really no impact to those, other than the, the local, you know, within the fifty foot.
And that I don't believe Deb, but can you confirm that at the state level, there's no um, there's no fifty-four to twenty-five foot non-disturbed zone? There's no requirement?
There is not under the State Wetlands Protection Act.
Okay.
Yes.
Because that would still be, I think that's the other piece that would still go back before our Conservation Commission for the state elements of this.
Cor- correct, yes.
Under the wetland protection, cause we don't have any jurisdiction.
Uh, Mr. Chair, um,
Yes.
The CONCOM chair has her hand raised?
Let her in. Glad she was still here.
I am.
You am.
I, I just wanted to point out that under our local bylaw, our town bylaw, we do have a definition of a vernal pool that differs from the state definition. And our definition defines the vernal pool, the resource, like the ponding part itself, as the mean annual high watermark of the pool plus a hundred feet. So that plus a hundred feet under our town bylaw is not considered a buffer zone. It is considered part and parcel of the vernal pool. And that is because of the habitat that is just um, critical to the vernal pool wildlife. And that is, that's the resource. Well, that is their area. That is where they, where you find that upland area um, is, is critical to their lifespan. So our town bylaw defines it as mean annual high watermark plus a hundred feet. And that's for informational purposes only. And I'll excuse myself again.
Before you do that, can I ask? Chair, I had a question about, so earlier, just to level set, you said that within the fifty foot notice disturb zone, the expectation is that this will create an adverse impact on the resource. Did we lose her? Yeah, so it's up to the applicant to prove that that assumption can be rebutted. So just to level set, in a typical application process, how would an applicant show that that isn't, isn't the case in a particular situation? Just to, obviously, I'm thinking about in this situation in particular, but how would an applica- applicant show that there wouldn't be an adverse impact by encroaching that fifty foot buffer zone?
The, the applicant would refer back to the Wetland Protection Act itself and the regulations. There are performance standards in the regulations, which gives some guidance in terms of how work can be um, executed without. And it would also be up to the experts that they would involve in the project to describe what the impacts would be. And Concom would use its peer review consultant to help assist in evaluating that.
Okay. All right, thank you. That's helpful.
I think, um, one other question, Deb Barrow. Um, so you just mentioned that the town bylaw defines the vernal pool as the mean high watermark plus one hundred feet. What, what is the state definition?
Definition, and I'm gonna guess that Steve God will correct me if I don't have this exactly right. But it's just, it would be the mean annual high watermark of, of the, of the pool itself.
I, I, I would add that it's, i- i- it is the mean high water, but the habitat extends out to the, the limit of the BVW in which the vernal pool is within. If the vernal pool is not within a BVW resource, then it has
What, what is a BVW?
Oh, sorry, bordering vegetated wetland. So um, on the plan, like i- in the area where we have this blue dash line, which is, and if you look, it says VP. So this is the vernal pool that was defined during our review process. This outer blue line is what we call the BVW or bordering vegetated wetland. So this encompasses the vernal pool. So my understanding, and I, I, I can clear, um, double check this. But if you have your mean high water, which is what you're seeing for the de- definition of the vernal pool here, habitat under the state regulation goes up to the bordering vegetation line. Or it stops here. If there is no other resource, such as a bordering vegetated wetland, it goes a hundred feet from that vernal pool. So if the only right, so if there was, if it was just a vernal pool and there was no other resource surrounding it, which I don't know, and maybe Deb can correct me, um, I don't really see that very often. Um, usually a vernal pool is surrounded by either a bordering vegetated wetland or an isolated vegetated wetland, su- such that, that the, the habitat goes to that second resource area limit and doesn't extend past, under the state regulation.
I was just gonna say, you know, not being an expert, uh, engineer or wetland scientist or, or Conservation Commission member, I think of it as, in this particular case, our vernal pool is located inside the wetland. Under the state regulation, the habitat area extends from the vernal pool, mean high water, to where the wetland line is. If it was by itself, it would go out a hundred feet. It either goes out, but in this case, it's entirely enclosed or encompassed by the wetland. So it's, basically, it's inside the wetland. The habitat area is within the wetland area and it doesn't extend out into our, the buffer zones that we've identified with the green lines. Does that make, I, 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 from a layman's standpoint, it's kinda, that's kinda how I see it. If, and this is, this isn't our case in particular, that's not an, a, a, a wetland, a vernal pool in other cases, which I've dealt with, have a habitat area within a hundred, has a hundred feet around the edge of the pool. But this case, our pool's inside, so the habitat area extends only to the uh, where the wetland flags are located, which is the BVW.
So Deb Barrow, is that correct for our local wetlands bylaw that extends just to the the BVW and not the hundred, you know, the hundred foot from the, from the vernal pool?
So and I'm, I'm getting confused myself, but under our local bylaw, our vernal pool definition is the mean annual high watermark plus a hundred feet, and that is the vernal pool. Under, and, and, and I don't understand the state regulations to, but I can be wrong, to refer to a habitat zone. That is the vernal pool under the state regulations is within a wetland. Then the wetland itself has a hundred foot buffer zone to it. The first fifty feet of that under our town bylaw would be in no disturb zone. And the outer fifty feet would, there's not, our, our bylaw doesn't address. So I would myself go back and look at the state regulation with respect, because I don't recall there being discussion of a zone for habitat. I think when people talk about vernal pools, the discussion is usually about the, the size of the pool itself. What, what is it? Cause it's the breeding area for the wildlife that uses it. But the critical component with respect to a vernal pool is the upland that surrounds it, whether it's wetland, upland, or just, well, wetland or upland, which would not have the wetland for and fauna. But um, because that's where the animals go to live once they've made it. So they don't live in the vernal pool. And so they do the breeding and then they go and they reside in the area surrounding it. And science would suggest, or some research would suggest, that's this first hundred feet that's critically important. Which doesn't really answer your question about this, the state regulation, but I don't recall it having any term as a habitat zone. But there is a lot, there is discussion in the state regulation about the importance of the of the area and the distance from the mean annual high watermark of a vernal pool.
Maybe it's simpler to say that the state doesn't regulate a vernal pool if it's located entirely within a bordering vegetated wetland, outside of the border of the wetland. I mean, that's, that's probably a more fair statement. I'm no, I'm no, I'm no biologist, so habitat, buffer, I, I, maybe, you know, I don't wanna miss, misspeak. But the state doesn't regulate the vernal pool if it's in top, if it's located inside a wetland. Um, it only makes, it does make one comment that it extends to the bordering vegetated wetland area. That's it. Whether that's the habitat area, the buffer zone, the regulated area, that's all they regulate. Once it hits the bed of, be- bordering vegetated wetland, after that, there is no longer uh, regulation by the state.
Yeah, understood. I understand that that is a state regulation, but I think we're talking about our local wetlands bylaw, which is
Different.
Yeah, which is different and it seems more restrictive and it doesn't talk about the buffer being to a limit of a BVW, but it's like extends a hundred feet out regardless. So that's, I think that's what I just want clarification on, because then we would need to then, uh, if it is irrespective of a BVW surrounding it, if it is just a hundred feet around the vernal pool, we just would want that delineated to see what impacts it would have, you know, to show.
It would, it, Christina, would be a waiver request as well, of course, cause it's a local
Yeah, of course. But I would just want to visually see, like, you know.
Sure. Yeah.
Let's see. No, I don't have it turned on, but we do, we can turn that, that hundred foot buffer, local hundred foot buffer from the vernal pool on, so that you can see what that limit is.
And, and just to be consistent and sorry to interrupt, but we don't call it a buffer. We just call it the vernal pool.
Yeah, I, I apologize.
Yeah, we've run into that before. I think Marshfield decided to do that too and redefine the buffer zone as part of the resource area, Deb. They use that as the, that's, they call it the resource area. So um, I think some towns are moving to do that, you know, I, 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 I think within a, with a vernal pool, I can understand it. With a re- with the buffer zone, I, I don't agree with the definition of the, the, the connotation that it's part of the resource area. I, I don't agree. Um, and I, and I'll be honest, I don't understand the state rule either. I don't, I don't understand. You know, that, that it only goes to the, to the edge of the well, and but I'm not a biologist, so I don't really know. But it does, it is confusing and again, and the area that we're most affecting is the pre-disturbed area with the dry waters. But I think Christine's right, we can show the hundred foot. I think we had it on other plans a long time ago. Um, so you can see that area where we have disturbance and w- w- the area within which we will be requesting a local waiver.
Yep.
Yeah, I think that, that would be helpful, Stephen, that I've said many times in this process, I'm a visual learner, so to uh,
Sure.
You know, to see the, more, more things delineated on the plan that helps us when we get to the decision point relative to uh, waivers of the local bylaw. Would be helpful.
Yeah. And I think Deb did a good job explaining, and you know, in this, we, none of the structures, none of the houses themselves are within twenty-five feet of any well. And the structures themselves are not either. Um, so, and that was a, that was a self-imposed buffer that we decided when we developed the plan. Uh, despite the fact that the state doesn't require us to do that, we just felt it was necessary to, to provide some sort of relief between the, you know, the, the, the development and the bordering vegetated wells. between the, you know, the 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 development and the bordering vegetated wells.
Okay, and generally speaking, nothing that you're proposing to construct is actually going to be in the wetlands.
The only thing, Jack, is that little crossing that we talked about to get to the reserve area. I think we're gonna end up building that. So that it's just there in, honestly, i- it's there so that if it twenty years from now, if they ever have to use the reserve area, they don't have to go back and try to, you know, get approval for that um for that crossing, it's already there.
What kind of material would that be?
Deb and I talked about it today. He she thinks it might be like a culvert bridge, Deb, I think you said.
Like a bottomless arch culvert?
Yeah, something like that, that allows the natural flow of the um the water through that area without, instead of like a pipe, in a in a buried pipe. So it would be a uh uh component part that gets dropped into place, and then it would be graded on either side to match it. Honestly, I think we might even, you know, if the conservation commissions thought it was okay, we'd just we may use that upland area as a little recreational area, so residents could walk up that way. If we build, if we build the crossing now, the residents would have the ability to go walk their dogs up there and maybe enjoy some, you know, woodland area, because it's all upland, so.
Anything further to add on these issues at this point? Steve Boulay, do you have any further comments?
Uh nothing else, we'll wait to get the uh responses and we'll we'll address them, they come in.
To think brings us, or Steve Guard, another Another item. We're we're talking here tonight about waivers. When can we expect to see specific waiver requests?
I think probably after
On everything.
Yeah, I think after the next meeting, we'll we'll have addressed all of the civil comments and all of the environmental comments. We'll have had board input after the next meeting. I think that's the appropriate time at that at that stage to then prepare our waiver list. Because we know what we're willing to do and what we're willing not to do, and then what we need relief from. Does that make sense? Um at least in my mind, Deb, I thought that would be the timing of it. That would give, that would give Tetra Tech an opportunity to respond to our responses. Us to have another public hearing after the uh the the the, I'm sorry, the peer review letter in it, in their responses are fully reviewed and vetted by the board and the public, and then at that point, I think we'd be ready to put pen to paper and actually identify all of the waivers.
And and we've been, I've been keeping a running tally as we go through these response to comments so that we can um start building that uh detailed waiver list.
Because generally, I think Tetra Tech would have comments on you know, proposed waivers, so that if you can at least identify those in the responses to Tetra Tech. Because obviously, we're seeing the, you know, the original question and the response and the further response and the response to the response. Multiple different colors of of black and white. To kind of track that so that we know what we're potentially looking at or being asked to consider as waivers rather than to kind of go through this whole process and then say, okay, well, based upon everything that's here, these are the waivers I think we need. I mean, I guess I'm I'm asking you guys to be a little more proactive in the presentation. It seems like everything is is kind of been you know, responsive, which is fine, but um you know, in looking, looking at the the timeline, uh you know, for when we're supposed to close the public hearing, which I think is September twenty, by September twenty ninth. I don't wanna go that far. That seems like a long way away, but it isn't. Since we opened this on April second, and I'm just it it just seems like things get presented, then there's a delay, and then at the next meeting, so. I'm used to a lot of back and forth with the applicant and Tetra Tech. So that as things are coming to us, there's a lot of things that look like they're resolved, and then we're making decisions on the larger waiver issues and
Yeah, I think that, I think the traffic um proved really positive in in being able to resolve things uh between the two engineers, right? But I guess my question, I guess my question is, but Deb, Deb, as you prepared the uh the responses to the civil and environmental, is that the time when you're going to identify in your response that, you know, the applicant will be seeking a waiver for this particular issue? So, all right, so I guess, Jack, you're gonna have a partial list of waiver requests on both of those responses at that point, so then
That's what I'm trying to clarify and ask.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. I meant that we wouldn't have like a final waiver list until after, you know, Tetra Tech and Deb coordinated their responses, and we had another public hearing, you know, that, but but I think that you're gonna have a whole bunch of them um requests in those documents for you to review before the next public meeting. Yeah, as part of our responses. Sorry if I I I I, maybe I didn't explain it the way uh clearly.
So we've heard from conservation as part of this process. Um because I I think we're pretty much as far as we're we're gonna be able to get on these issues tonight in terms of the applicant presentation, Tetra Tech response, because we need to have the written responses from Tetra Tech, and then as Steve mentioned, a couple of weeks out from there, so, you know, three weeks from now, ideally, we're in a position to review this a little more carefully. Or not not more carefully, but more uh with more focus. Okay, um but I would at this point, if the, if there's anyone um in attendance who has any questions.
Is Deb gonna talk about stormwater too?
We certainly can, Christine. We can talk about stormwater, but I gotta admit, I I maybe it's better as Jack's to defer, but you know, from this, but we're happy to run you through it. I I Deb's prepared to do that for sure.
I guess, Jack, whatever you wanna do, if we just
I'm sorry, I I cut you off. What did you say?
I'm saying whatever you wanna do, Jack, whether we just do environmental today and then stormwater another another time.
Well, I think they're all sort of interrapped, so if if you feel it's productive.
Mr. Chair, can I jump in here?
Sure, please do.
I think you need to get a sense as to your schedule moving forward. Because it's possible you only have, you know, if you go every thirty days, you may only have two more hearings. Case we can't really defer a lot of this stuff. So I I think you need to identify, you know, what the dates are going to be moving forward. And if we have the ability to, you know, squeeze in an extra hearing, that would be helpful. Um but if we don't, then we're gonna have to make sure we're covering everything, you know, all at once.
Okay, so we should talk about stormwater tonight to the extent that we can.
Well, I I again, I I think that you need to look at what your hearing schedule is going to be. You know, i- if you're able to get in more than just the two more hearings, then you could defer this, but if not, then I think you need to cover it tonight.
Well, I guess I was thinking deferring only in terms of, well, all right, let's talk about stormwater.
And 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 this goes for the waiver list as well. In terms of waiting until after the next hearing, well, that means you're not gonna get a waiver list until just before you're ready to close the public hearing, if we're only gonna have two more hearings. And and that would be, I think, problematic. So I I do think before we walk out of here tonight or or turn our computers off tonight, you're gonna want to map out, you know, what the rest of the hearing schedule is going to look like.
What we had tentatively thought about was um going going back to the traffic issue, and we can potentially get to Courtney's responses on that tonight, but the, we we still have to do, back back to the traffic issue. We we've got all of these, you know, the wetland, the things we've been talking about tonight to address, and we need waivers in front of us, and on the traffic side, we've determined that the existing site distances, as the site exists right now, you know, is stated by the applicant's traffic engineer. Um they're not adequate now. They are proposing remedial measures um that involves removal of trees and regrading of the road and a few other things, I'm sure, but that's the big picture. Um the removal of the trees and any rock walls or anything requires a separate hearing, as I noted earlier in the introductory remarks. So um in anticipation of that, Maria was planning to have a meeting with um the applicant team, or planning to schedule a meeting with the applicant team. The um winners who are most directly affected, because the work would be done immediately in front of their property. And also Public Works Planning Board Chair, um Tree Warden. And it was suggested by Public Works, the Police Chief. And the chair would probably um attend that meeting, meeting at the site, so it wouldn't be a formal site visit by the board. It's not an open meeting, but it's on a public street, so anyone that happens by, I suppose, can listen in. But basically to gather information, um not gather information, I'm getting that wrong, but to just understand what the issues are. Um and then so that at the next hearing, we would be able to um address the public hearing for um under the So Maria's on vacation beginning the twenty first of July and back August fourth, so the plan was to have that I'm calling it a site visit, but not a formal site visit, for the interested people to see what we're talking about. Um so that would be sometime the second week of August, maybe, Maria?
Yes, because the planning chair is out the first week of August.
Right, and so then the next phase of that would probably be the last phase of the traffic and safety issues would be the uh hearing and decision on the removal of the trees, so we don't have to get into those details tonight, so that would be occurring. You know, that that could be within days after the uh everyone sees the site, but so that would be at best the second week of August. So if that doesn't take a whole long time, we, you know, we'd be having our next hearing on this matter, the second week of August. We could have a hearing, uh continue this hearing and deal with the issues that we're talking about tonight, the wetlands, the environmental, the site, all of those things. Anytime anyone's ready, but I'm hearing, you know, we have things this week and then two weeks for review by the peer reviewers, so if, you know, well, I I don't, I don't know quite what to tell you, or how do we schedule?
Continuing to August eleventh?
Probably.
Plenty more meeting on August eleventh.
Well, sometime that week. Is that a, is that a, I don't have a calendar in front of me.
August eleventh is a Monday. I can't do the Monday or Tuesday, but I can do Wednesday or Thursday.
I can only do Wednesday that week.
Which is the thirteenth
Correct.
Of August. Yeah, a regular meeting got moved to the sixth, right, Maria?
And and then, and you don't have to schedule it now, but if there's a way to to squeeze in another meeting between that date and the date that you have to close, which is the twenty ninth, uh basically to squeeze in two meetings between then and the twenty ninth. And I think that that would alleviate, you know, some of the pressure.
Yeah, well, I think we're beyond, you know, after the thirteenth, you know, we we can do them at two week intervals if need be.
Okay, so in that case, I mean, I think that you do have enough time to, you know, schedule those meetings and and get all the information you need without having to cover it tonight.
Jack, if that site visit was the fourth, why can't we have a meeting that same week? We just need more time.
We could as far as
Fifth to the eighth that week.
Maria, you're just back.
That's fine.
Can we take the plan down for a minute, please?
Oh, sure, sure, absolutely.
Thank you, sorry, Deb. Have the conversation, I can see all the faces.
Sure.
Are you back, Maria?
Yes, I'm back August fourth. I can meet that same night if needed.
No, you're back August fourth, you need to or or you what are you suggesting, Jared, that we do the other issues and?
Yeah, I I think I'm worried about waiting to the following week. If we can fit a a a meeting in that first week of August, I think we should take advantage.
The only night I'm available that week is the sixth.
We have a regular CBA meeting that night.
You can always meet without me, and I can just watch the video and and catch up if that's easier for the board.
Well, Jared, your thought is the if we're meeting that week, would that be just to resolve the traffic issues? It was just the basically the public hearing for the tree removal. Right?
But you're meet, you're meeting with everyone on the fourth, right, to discuss that? Do you think that's enough time to have that? To have things resolved two days?
I don't know, Maria hasn't set up the meeting yet, so.
I mean, the the site meeting has to be the second week of August. If you want the planning board chair in it, I can try to get a different planning board representative instead, if you wanted it to happen the first week of August.
Well, I think there's some time urgency here. Someone from the planning board should probably be at the site meeting. Simply because the, you know, again, like same as we have the Conservation Commission represented and talking with us on on these issues, um because we're being asked to, you know, potentially grant waivers to local bylaws. We kind of need to know what we're dealing with, the the decisions we're making in the uh hearing on the scenic roads and shade tree. State statutes are to be made by the tree warden and by the planning board typically, so we we would like to be able to hear from the tree warden and the planning board as to, you know, their input in making those decisions. At the same time, I say all of that, understanding from a conversation that I've had with Paul, and correct me if I'm going wrong here, Paul. But um when it, when it comes to that public hearing relative to the tree removal, we are essentially precluded from applying any standard other than, once again, the um, you know, public concern versus weighing the public, any public concerns versus the local need for affordable housing. So to a certain extent, any other standards are irrelevant, or are they important to know in making our decision?
Well, they, they're definitely important to be aware of, to the extent that there are other specific standards, but ultimately, your decision is going to be held to the standard as to whether or not it's consistent with local needs.
So, yeah, I mean, we should, it's it's not, it's not a matter of being advised by the planning board, but we're asked to play the part of the planning board under the scenic. under the Scenic Road Act, Scenic, yeah, Scenic Roads Act. So if some, if someone else could be there, I mean, Maria, I I'm not trying to put additional pressure on you, but I guess the sooner that could be scheduled.
Would it be okay if it was during work hours? Would you like it to be after, like, four thirty? I it depends on who I can get from the Planning Board to come. I think if it's gonna be town staff, it's a little easier to get people to show up during business hours. But if you want to make it a meeting, that's okay, too.
No, I think I think it should be during business hours. I think it should be at the convenience of those that need to be there. And, you know, the convenience of the the winners since it's directly abutting and potentially affecting their property.
I can try to schedule that this week before I leave, so it's in the books. I can coordinate with the winners and the Chair, uh, Planning Board rep.
But then we, then we, then we get to the issue of, you know, yeah, it'd be good if we could do it that week. Because that's the week of the August fourth. Yeah, because otherwise we're trying to schedule that sometime Monday or Tuesday, the eleventh or twelfth, if we're waiting on on the Chair of the Planning Board to be back. Does that, Jared, does that address your concern if we have the 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 site meeting early enough?
It does.
We go with the thirteenth. Because because I don't, I don't see how we can fit in a hearing that, fit in the hearing that same week. But on the thirteenth, we would do that, and we will also have the thirteenth as, you know, we're we're going to continue on with the rest of this, we're, you know, tonight. But the other issues. That give us a sufficient timeline, Paul, do you think?
Yes.
Yeah, Maria, you think you can pull together the site meeting for sometime the week of the August fourth?
Yep.
When you come back, I'll totally refresh for like fifteen or twenty minutes.
I'll have that ready. I'll send some emails tomorrow morning to get that started.
So just to make sure, we're gonna meet, our next official meeting will be the thirteenth, and we're gonna do a site visit.
No, we're, we're not gonna do a site visit. The Board is not doing a site visit, not to cut you off, Bill, but just
Yeah, no, thank, I'm trying to figure out my schedule, so go, please, thank you.
The the next hearing session meeting of the full board will be on Wednesday, August thirteenth.
Good.
Is what we're proposing.
Yep, that works.
We'll do that formally at the end of this meeting. But prior to that, and that will include the hearing relative to tree removal, there there's a hearing required under the the Scenic Roads Act and under the public shade tree law.
Gotcha.
Does that work for the applicant? Steve, does that work okay for you guys?
Yeah, I I think that's fine. The fourth will be a site visit to review the mitigation.
Sometime the week of the
Yeah, yeah, sometime the week of the fourth. The thirteenth will be a public meeting. The the thirteenth, on the public meeting, Jack, I just want to make sure that we're prepared. It looks like that will give us enough time to have the responses to the civil and the environmental file. Tetra Tech, two weeks to get back their their responses to our responses. So do we anticipate the thirteenth will be a meeting for finishing the traffic, i.e. the tree removal?
Yes.
And then reviewing the environmental responses and reviewing the civil responses. Uh, exchange of responses, I guess we can call them, on the thirteen, right?
Yes.
Okay, I think that's very productive. I just wanna, I wanna ask a question and maybe Paul can clarify, but by way of additional hearings, like I I hear you talk a lot about having a scenic road hearing and and we don't, we don't have to do that, you know, that
What he's talking about is holding those hearings as part of this hearing process.
Yeah, okay, that that's what I was
It's not a separate hearing process.
Gotcha, gotcha.
That's what I was saying, the hearing within the hearing, but that will be the first agenda item of the August thirteenth meeting will be the hearing on the tree remove.
You've got it.
Okay.
That works. Um, we may not have Ian there on the thirteenth, but I think he'll have a pinch hitter. But at that point, I think we're gonna find that the 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 exchange is pretty minimal between Tetra Tech, uh, having seen the report that they just filed, I don't, I don't think. Ian will have a representative there, right Ian? I think you, yeah.
Yeah, someone else from my firm can make it, but I'm on vacation that week.
That's fine. We can do that. To keep on schedule.
That would be good. And, yeah, so the, in on the environmental issues, the things we've been talking about tonight, we'll go. Then we should have the response to Tetra Tech and the Tetra Tech response to the response, and then we'll go into that further that night. And with your responses in the back and forth, well, your your response to Tetra Tech, to the existing mail letters that we're kind of working off of tonight is going to include your with some degree of specificity, your intended or proposed waiver requests with respect to those issues.
Yes, we can do that. I think we can do that, Steve.
All right, sounds good.
Okay, so back to your question, Christine. I'm sorry, there's a lot going on here tonight. What was it you were questioning that we should continue with?
Whether we 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 do the storm water.
Okay. Is that, I'll I'll ask the uplay, is that something we're prepared to discuss tonight, or is that better left to the exchange after after the exchange with Tetra Tech? Or if you want to give us an overview of the storm water, so if there's questions or concerns, let's do that.
That's what I was thinking, Jack.
And and then, and then I want to open it up to the the public for a couple of minutes with respect to the storm water and the environmental and the wetlands issues, if they have any questions. Because I don't want to push it so far down the road that we've forgotten what we're talking about.
I think I think that makes sense. I was gonna suggest Deb do an, you know, an overview of the storm water and then we can uh, like we did at the last meeting, the thirteenth meeting, we might even be able to go issue by issue, you know, with the with those comments. Because I think we're gonna resolve a lot of those issues by the plan changes, you know, and complying with Tetra Tech's requests, so we won't need to deal with those, but yeah.
Right, and then we'll, then we'll have a limited.
Yeah.
A more, a more limited or more, not limited, but more focused.
Yeah.
Presentation and agenda for the thirteenth. Wait, just one, 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 one other question, kind of to the group of participants here, the since the thirteenth sounds like it could be a longer meeting. Would there be any inclination to or to start any earlier? I know that's tough for some folks.
Not for me.
It'll be via Zoom, right? It'll be via
Yeah.
Yeah.
I don't, I don't think I can, Jack. I'm gonna be on the road for work, so
Okay.
For me to get on.
Yeah, to get home. All right. No, we'll leave it at six o'clock and we'll be focused. The Chair will be muted for the entire meeting. Okay. Deb Keller, you have the
Okay.
Stormwater.
All right, so may I? Okay, may I, um, share my screen again?
Yes, please. Yep.
Through the grading plan? Okay, so I'm, I'll, I'll start with the uh, starting with Plain Street here on the left-hand side of the view. So as we come in, um, the road, again, we, we, we are grading a little bit here, so, um, this portion of the existing driveway is extremely flat and pitches directly into the wetland. So what we were looking to do here was sort of seesaw the driveway from a grading standpoint, so we have a high point right here. We have this small area pitches back to a trench drain, which is sort of like a a drain that runs across the entire driveway, so that we're capturing all of the runoff here.
Hey, Deb, can you zoom in a little bit? I I'm sure you're looking at a giant fifty inch screen. Thanks. Thanks.
You know how big it is on an iPad?
So again, I'll start, this is a quick, the one eighty five point two is our high point here. We're pitching down towards the street. Of course, the contour label is covering it, but that dark thick line here is the trench drain coming across the driveway. It it has, um, as designed, will have a a sump, so it basically acts like a catch basin for treatment, discharging into a smaller, what we call a four bay uh, as part of a constructed wet basin. Which allows, which would have a lined bottom and planted edges so that it holds the storm water and then allows storm water out through the outlet control structure, which is this box here, flows across to a spill riprap pad, um, prior to flowing into the wetland. Again, um, so this was our high point, so now we're going down here, trying to capture as much of this entrance into the wet basin. We are proposing another trench drain across the road here. Again, same with a sump at the end. Pipe outlet to the sediment four bay, spilling over into the constructed wetland and out through the outlet control structure. That, that's the main entrance. Uh, storm water, as we move down the main driveway here, we start pitching, um, the road consistent with the existing driveway runs across the berm so that we could meet treatment. We do have a Cape Cod berm on this edge, so the water doesn't go directly into the wetland. What we ultimately would like is a low point here with a spillway. We have a grass channel with stone check jams for treatment prior to, um, being collected in a rain garden. Um, ultimately spilling over into the pond area, um, for the drainage, uh, flow pattern here. What we did up gradient of the proposed road, um, trying to minimize the amount of runoff going into those treatment facilities. We have, um, sort of a swale channel similar to what we saw out there currently along this side of the, um, existing driveway. So we have a swale here coming down. What we're proposing to do is extend that existing outlet which are cross culvert underneath the road so that we're capturing any of the up gradient flow that comes on to the site so that it doesn't, um, have to run through the road, storm water drainage gets captured in that swale, runs across and into the wetland area. As we move into the site, we have, as I mentioned, here is in a a subsurface infiltration chamber system at the end of this, uh, shared driveway, which collects roof runoff, a portion of, um, these two struc- dwellings. And, um, the two end structures will all, roof runoff will all go into, um, this subsurface chamber system. The roadway drainage runs down and is captured by a catch, uh, two catch basins at the intersection here. This is the high point. This flows down into that main entrance that I just described. This flows to this low point, so so we're capturing that shared driveway in this closed drainage system, which goes into the subsurface chamber system across the street, which has an overflow outlet discharging to the wetland again. And this is consistent with, you know, sort of the existing flow patterns on the site. They come from the bottom of the plan view and flow towards the wetland. As we move along the road again, we have, sorry, there is one small high point in between here. So you're, you're only capturing this subsurface chamber system is only capturing this small watershed area. So we start with a larger watershed, which is going to the much larger drainage system located in this northern portion of the property, and it collects the catch basins, starting with catch basins three and four here. This closed drainage system runs down this roadway and ties into the subsurface chamber system, capturing all of the front yards and a portion of the internal island. Again, we have a high point at this, the second shared driveway. This runs down towards those two catch basins again. Again, all of these, um, homes and side yards drain into the roadway, a closed drainage system. On the, the second shared driveway, we have a high point. Um, here at the end, kind of goes down to a double catch basin here, which ties into a, let's call this, this is my third larger infiltration system in the backyard here, which were, even though the road kind of grades down towards the main driveway, we're trying to capture as much and send any, send this into this closed, um, subsurface chamber system. So again, it's capturing all of the front yards, et cetera. As we make our way around this high point, this is all flowing down towards there we go, um, the larger system, so this will all be captured in, um, closed drainage system down towards the chambers. And again, front, front, front driveways, front buildings are all flowing towards the roadway. Again, the island here development is flowing towards the street and into the large system. The only change here, we added an additional subsurface chamber system in between, sort of to capture some of the roof runoff from these four buildings here. So the closed drainage systems consist of deep sump-putted catch basins to manholes. Pre-treatment, uh, once we get down just before the subsurface chamber systems, we're proposing what you, uh, call a pre-treatment unit system. Right now, we have a first defense unit through Hydro International, which provides pre-treatment. We also have added pre-treatment. Um, the chamber systems also have what they call an isolator row, so the row in which we're originally starting discharge into. This, this again is just a uh, an extra step pre-treatment into that drainage chamber system, or excuse me, infiltration chamber system. You don't normally need both of those. You can use one. In this case, we know that we're trying to provide as much treatment before we recharge groundwater. Because we are in a water supply, we're trying to enhance that pre-treatment before uh, we we recharge to the groundwater. So therefore, we're using both of those as pre-treatment into the system. So you'll see that darker sort of hatched line in each one of those systems. These three being the three that are collecting roadway runoff. Whereas these two systems do not have that because they're only collecting roof runoff, which is considered clean runoff and, um, does not need, uh, pre-treatment. So in general, that is, that is, um, the storm water uh, for the site. We did do, um, through some of the review comments, and I'm sure we'll get into this a little bit more, uh, in detail. Uh, some of the comments asked us to, um, In detail, uh, some of the comments asked us to um. Adjust the model slightly, which is including the existing pond in the existing conditions. A drainage model, um, we looked at, we raised the uh, infiltration chambers slightly. So that we could um, meet the four foot, the full four foot separation from groundwater. So we, we achieved those with some minor revisions, which we'll be seeing at the next hearing. But in general, that is the overview for the drainage and how it's being collected on site, being treated, fully treated. Prior to any discharge, whether that's through infiltration or uh, outlet um, discharge points from. Either the wet, wet basin or the rain garden. Or the grass swale for that matter, coming across and into the pond. I'm happy to try to answer any questions at this point.
Christine.
Yeah, one question is, is, is there a requirement or certain number of feet that a wastewater system needs to be from like? Uh, like a, a storm or catch basin?
So yes, I believe it's um. I will double check, but I'm pretty sure it's twenty-five feet, so that's, that's why these catch basins are pushed. This way, so that we stay here, here's our field here. So um, the infiltration systems have to be a minimum of fifty feet per stormwater. There's a little bit of confusion, stormwater management regs want them fifty feet, so that's what we're meeting the requirement. If you go through Title V. They say twenty-five feet, but we're, we're meeting, we want to meet the stormwater management reg. That says twenty-five feet, so this is, excuse me, fifty feet. So this subsurface chamber system is fifty feet from the field. This one is over, you know, it's showing here sixty-nine feet. Um, so we're meeting that requirement and the catch basins are here are over. Um, the twenty-five foot setback to the system.
Great, thank you.
You're welcome.
Jared, Bill, any questions at this point?
No, at this point.
I'm good, Jack, thank you.
Yeah, Deb, just one question back, going back towards the street. Back out on the driveway, blow that up, yeah. So you ba- basically. As you said, a, a seesaw, so that there's. Runoff from the road is going into like a catch basin right along the edge of the street. And then where does it go from there?
So it'll discharge into the wet basin that we've upgraded here. So it's in a, what we call sediment four bay, which is pre-treatment before it gets into the main compartment of that basin area. And so we're doing the same thing over here as well, trying to get as much into that wet basin as possible.
So a wet basin is something you're constructing?
Yes, yes, yeah. So we're too close to groundwater here and we don't want to raise this portion of the site. So a wet, a constructed wet basin will give us the treatment that we need for the um, stormwater. And, and a discharge, so we're, we're getting our water quality treatment here. We're not getting any. Groundwater recharge through this BMP, that would be through the subsurface chamber system primarily.
Okay, and then from the wet basin, it eventually then flows back into the. Veronal Pool area.
Correct, so there's um, this tiny box here is a concrete. Uh, outlet control structure, and so we can design how that outlet is shaped. So that we allow only a certain amount of flow out. Um, through the storm event to make sure that we're not increasing the amount of flow that's going to that wetland. So that's what that out- outlet control structure um, helps us do. So that would be the discharge point for that, that, that wet, wet pond.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Steve Boullet, do you have any comment at this point on this portion?
Um, yeah, I was glad to hear that, um, you know, Deb and the design team looked at uh. That swale along the existing road, we did, we did note that during the, the site inspection. Uh, well, the, the uh, site visit we did a couple of months ago now. Um, and, and noted that cross-covert, so it was good that, you know, that's brought into the plan now. Um. But yeah, I mean, uh, uh, we'll, we'll certainly run through all the comments when, when we get the uh. When we get the, the replies back, but um. Yeah, I think. From that standpoint, I think we're um, we're good for now.
Good. Right, thank you. Um, Deb Barrow, anything from a conservation standpoint? Comments? Or maybe not?
We can give her some time to raise.
Oh.
A hand. If needed. Oh, yes, there you go, let me pull her back in, or I can just allow to talk.
Yeah.
There you go.
Can you hear me?
We can hear you.
Okay, sorry, um, I don't, I'm just listening at this point, I don't really have any comments to make, I just wait and, and gather more information. Um. I'm just trying to sort of follow along with you right now, be interesting. I, could I, could I ask, would it be possible, um? That if the May eighth Tetra Tech letter, the stormwater letter, I don't, I don't. I can find that online, that I might be able to access that or at some point.
I can send it to you.
Oh, that would be great, sorry, I mean, I, I was. Trying to prepare ahead of time, so I'm not as facile with this, I'm listening, but thank you, I don't have any comments.
All right, great, thank you. All right, any uh? There we go, what's happening here?
I thought you might want me to take the plan down for a minute.
Yeah, no, that's good, thank you. No, I, I, I all of a sudden, I was, I was in a gallery mode before, kind of like playing Hollywood Squares. And then when I came back, there was just one face there. All righty. Good.
Can I ask a question, Mr. Chair?
You may.
Um, so you mentioned that, that there was a um, the isolator row was. One of the two pre-treatment methods for that big, for those bigger systems that treat more than just a roof recharge. Is the other one nitrogen removal?
It, it's, it's called a first defense unit. It's, it's a pre-treatment structure, it looks like a manhole and it has an insert in it, in it. It's, it, it's more for, it allows the water to swirl in the structure and settle out. Before then it goes through that. Pre-treatment structure into that isolator row and then spreads out into the uh, infiltration chamber, that, the entire system.
What, what is that, the technical name for that?
Um, it's, the generic name is a pre-treatment structure. But the manufacturer that we've chosen to identify on this site is called a first defense unit.
Okay, so it's the first defense unit and the isolator row.
That is correct.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay. I think with that, I would like to uh. Open things up for a few minutes here for uh, any of the attendees who may have. A question or a brief comment, I would ask that we limit it to the discussion. That we've had tonight, um, relative to environmental and stormwater and septic and uh. All of the things that we've been talking about, when we're, we're not going to get to traffic tonight, that will be focus of the uh. The beginning of the next hearing, which will be August thirteenth. So um, we promote people one at a time, raise your hand if you would like to speak. And I would ask in the interest of uh, some degree of orderliness, if you. Obviously first uh, identify yourself by name and address for the record. And then if you have any question, please ask it and the appropriate person here can hopefully. Answer it or address it or defer it to uh, when we have the. Comments back on the Tetra Tech letters. Um, so some of them may not be answered directly tonight, and then if you have a uh. A comment or any further uh. Information to provide that might be helpful to the board, then you can do that. But I'm going to ask that each person uh, is only going to speak once this evening.
Mr. Chair, would you like to start with Michael and Susan Weiner?
I would.
Great. Promoting them now.
Hi, uh, can you be, can we be heard?
You can be heard.
Thank you.
So, and before, and before you start, Mike, um, I just wanted to. Confirm with you, I, I realized as we were talking about the timeline for uh, for doing the site meeting. Uh, outside, immediately adjacent to your property. Um, will you be around the week of the uh, of August fourteenth, or August fourth, rather? Does that work okay for you?
We'll make ourselves available.
All righty, good, thank you.
Um, my question is for Attorney Haverty. Can he hear me?
I can hear you.
All right, thank you. So uh, just a general question and then maybe a follow-up based on your answer. If the um, zoning board of appeals makes a decision to deny the permit. And the developer appeals to the Housing Appeals Committee. Can the zoning board of appeals offer professional reports after their denial for subsequent submission to the Housing Appeals Committee? Or would they carry little weight since they were not considered at the time that the zoning board of appeals decided to deny?
The process before the Housing Appeals Committee is what's known as a de novo review. So we can submit, or the board can submit whatever information it chooses to submit during that process. It does not matter whether or not it was submitted initially as part of the process before the board.
Okay, that answers my question, so I don't have a follow-up, thank you.
Thank you. Do we have anyone else that wishes to speak? I don't see any raised hands, Maria.
I don't either, um. Give him a few more seconds.
Mu- much more difficult topic tonight.
Yes.
Understandably. Plus, I think, you know, we will obviously have a lot more specificity and uh, more, more refined. Discussion on all of this, um. You know, at the, at the next hearing, because we will have had. Um. Back and forth between the applicant and Tetra Tech. And some.
Oh, there we go.
More specific guidance on the uh, waivers being requested. Okay.
We got Frank Corbett. Would you like me to promote Fran?
Frank Corbett, yep.
There we go.
All right, can you hear me?
We can hear you. Would you just identify yourself, name and address for the record, please?
Sure, Fran, Fran Corbett, ninety-two Plain Street. Uh, just one, one quick question or a clarification on the. The discussion of the septic uh, and. The four hundred and forty gallons per. I think it's per acre versus the six hundred and sixty gallons per acre. Where does that six hundred and sixty gallons per acre come from? Wi- within uh, within Title V?
Deb Kellor, I think that's you.
Okay, all right, I just didn't want to uh, start speaking, being allowed. Um, so it is in Title V and it would be under um, alternative um, treatments. And it's for nitrogen, so we need to find and, or actually pick out the appropriate. Uh, nitro- denitrification system that we would include in the septic design. That would, that is approved by DEP to provide the six hundred and sixty gallons per acre.
And that's six hundred and sixty gallons, if you find that alternative treatment and, and it's approved, the six hundred and sixty gallons. Is a maximum?
Correct.
Okay. All right, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you. And Deb, in the, in the comments back and forth, can you include the uh, the site or the reference in, to where in Title V that appears?
Yes, I'll add that to the response letter.
Okay, thank you. All right. Okay, it's my old constitutional law, you teacher used to say, questions, comments, reactions? Did he hear it all, the snoring and? So, um. All right. Anything further anyone would like to add at this point tonight? And the applicant, or any other questions from the board?
I think we're good, Jack. I thought tonight went well. Sorry, we didn't have the responses back, but I think we made well, uh, good use of our time.
Yeah, oh, one thing, one thing I would ask, um. When you're getting down to the final waiver list, not necessarily, well, if, if possible, in the comments where the. Waiver requests are at least being noted in um, in Deb's responses um. To the Tetra Tech letters that we'll be addressing at the next meeting. But particularly when you're doing the final um. List of waiver request, it would be really helpful to me. And I think to the rest of the board. Um, and also to Paul, if. When you're requesting the waiver, if you can, you're citing, you know, what, what you're looking to waive, like the regulation. But if you can just cut and paste what the regulation says, and then what you're asking for is a waiver. And proposing um, proposed alternative, just so that it's all in one place rather than looking at a waiver request. Than having to go somewhere else to look up the regulation that you're referring to.
To give an example, um, that was already discussed during the hearing tonight about the, the fifty-foot no disturb. Zone and you're looking to do twenty-five foot, so just lay that out, what the requirement is and what your proposal is.
Easy, no problem.
Yep.
We'll take out the staples button. Okay. Anything else that I'm missing, Paul?
Uh, other than to formally continue.
Yeah. Okay, and, and in terms of the uh. The site meeting or site visit, it's not a formal site visit, so we don't, we don't have to vote on a date or anything with that, it's just. When Maria can schedule everyone, and the chair will probably attend. Um. But it's not a public meeting, so there's no notification requirements.
Right.
Oh, the one other question I had, and I know I'd asked you about this before, um, for the. At the next hearing, we're going to be doing the hearing within a hearing, relative to the tree removal. That wouldn't require separate public notice, is that correct? Because it's within this process.
Correct.
But to the extent that there might be folks who aren't aware of this. But to the extent that there might be folks who aren't aware of this process going on, who may have or is, is deeply aware as the, you know, the neighbors that have been following it closely who may have some valuable input is how, how would we necessarily give any additional notice that that's going to happen within the next hearing? Do we include it in the in the agenda?
Yeah, well, I mean, the board is free to provide whatever notice it deems appropriate. So if you want to go and actually follow what the notice requirements are under the scenic road bylaw, under the shade tree bylaw. Um certainly within your rights to do that, provide the notice and, and, you know, make it clear in that notice that the hearing is part of an ongoing um comprehensive permit hearing and is not separate from that.
Yeah.
Certainly, you know, you absolutely may do that. I don't know if you want to put Maria through that, but
Not if we wanted to come back from vacation.
I just want to note that we wouldn't be able to meet the technical requirements of Scenic Road Act hearing because of the newspaper deadlines and the hearing being around three weeks away. Uh but I could still notice it in the newspaper. The question would be that will probably a cost at the town would assume because it's a willing notification, not a legal requirement.
Well, I, I think all things, yeah, because I was thinking of, you know, the timelines would be difficult and uh we don't we don't want to slow down progress here. Um the other thing that I noticed in looking at um it, it's in one of the two-state statutes, I believe. I've done a little bit of reading on that. But sometime prior to the, the site meeting or site visit, Steve, can you identify or mark with a ribbon or something, the trees that you're proposing to remove or Deb?
Yeah, sure. Yeah.
Cause otherwise, you know, there's a lot of trees out there.
No problem.
Okay. Um, and if you can do that, you know, relatively early, then people walking by or riding by or whatever can have some idea of of what's being proposed.
Sure.
Good. All right. That being the case, yeah, we're doing all right. We have a motion to continue the hearing to Wednesday, August thirteenth at six P M via Zoom.
Jared Gustafson making a motion to continue the hearing to Wednesday, August thirteenth at six P M via Zoom.
Christine Barton, seconds.
All right, some are in favor by roll call, Jared?
Jared Gustafson, aye.
Christine Barton, aye.
Jack McNicholas, aye. So the hearing is continued to Wednesday, August thirteenth at six P M. It will be remotely via Zoom. We will let everyone, you know, within this group confirm um, you know, when the site visit will be or the site meeting that Maria is arranging. And uh for all the folks, there's two or three contact people that are in contact with Maria, so we will let you know when that is scheduled. Since everyone in the neighborhood has invested interest. Um, they certainly don't know when that's being held. So we will do that. Okay.
And Mr.
We have meetings, we have minutes from the wet.
Uh would you like me to post a, a legal notice for the side, the scenic road portion of the site visit and how, would you like it to be one week or two weeks?
It has to be two weeks, at least fourteen days.
Yeah, and twice.
Before and twice. Um and if it's not, if it's not required that we post it, I think if we identify the trees, I would definitely include it um in the agenda and maybe post the agenda for the next meeting as soon as possible.
So just to clarify, are, are you talking about posting for the hearing within the hearing or posting for the site visit?
I'm talking about the hearing within the hearing. I don't think we have to.
I think Maria said the site visit, so I just wanted to clarify that.
We don't need to post anything for the site visit.
No, I, it just sounded like you wanted a legal ad to go out to get people more notice, or was that the agenda that you meant instead?
What he's talking about is for
I'm, I'm talking, I'm talking about the August thirteenth hearing, the hearing within the hearing under the Scenic Roads Act. Just making people more aware that that's going on within this ongoing hearing.
Right, and Maria, if you want to send me a draft
Yep.
The notice, I can take a look at it and, and provide any comments I might have.
Okay. I will do that.
But do, is it advisable, Paul, that we actually publish that twice and so I thought we came to the conclusion that the I would, I would like the trees marked.
Right. It, it doesn't need to be published twice. It doesn't, I mean, you've already complied with the notice requirements by posting this hearing process at the beginning of the process.
Right.
That's the only notice requirement you're required to make. So anything else is really just going above and beyond.
Right. And word, word will get out about the, the site meeting or the site visit the week of August fourth. And um the trees will be marked well in advance of that. So that that can be a productive meeting. So, you know, the visual aspects of all of this. Um and what I was thinking is we can just include in the agenda for the August thirteenth meeting. You know, that, the first agenda item reserving the right to take things out of order, but an agenda item will be the hearing under the Scenic Roads Act and the Shade Tree Act. That make sense?
I can make that clear in the agenda, separate them as articles and say that if anyone wants to take a look at the trees, it will be marked on site. So
Exactly.
Got it. So I will send you the draft agenda, just if you want to take another look before I post.
Okay, good, perfect.
And Steve and Deb, can you just let Maria know once those trees are marked so that
Yeah, of course. I'm thinking we're just gonna put a surveyor's tape around tree, you know, the bright orange surveyor's tape, so you can see it.
Yep. And then you're also going to mark the uh, the boundary line? The property line between?
I had that noted from our last meet, discussion last.
Cause that'll all be relevant to the discussion and ultimately the uh, the hearing. So on the tree removal. Good. All right, anything else? All right, we've continued the hearing to Wednesday, August thirteenth, six P M via Zoom. We will schedule a site meeting. Not a formal site visit. Sometime the week of August fourth at the convenience of our concern that Maria is handling. Um, so with that, then we can entertain a motion to close the meeting.
Adjourn.
Adjourn the meeting.
Jack, do you want to approve the last minutes first or no?
Ah, yes. I started to do that and then Maria got me going.
I'm, I'm gonna log off, Mr. Chair. Have a good night.
All right, thank you, Paul.
Yeah, good night, everybody. Thank you very much.
All right, good night, Steve. Thanks.
So they looked good to me, Jack. I have no issues with the minute, uh minutes from six thirty.
Yeah, I didn't have any comments either.
No. Neither do I.
All right, uh I will make a motion.
With the one technical thing I pointed out to Maria earlier today that resolved. Good.
Jared Gustafson making a motion to approve the minutes from June thirtieth, uh twenty twenty-five.
Christine Barton, seconds.
All in favor by roll call, Jared?
Jared Gustafson, aye.
Christine Barton, aye.
Jack McNicholas, aye. Those meeting minutes are approved.
Beautiful. All right, Jared Gustafson making a motion to adjourn the meeting.
Christine Barton, seconds.
Jared Gustafson, aye.
Christine Barton, aye.
Jack McNicholas, aye. Bye, 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 bye. Good. Thank you all. I know this is
Thanks, everyone. Have a good night.